Hello everyone, I'm Tegan Evans. As many of you know, when the Lewisville Herald moved on into retirement, the city of Lewisville, Nimishill Township, and all of its community members were left with a void. The community lost its ability to hear about local events, news, information, sports, and community projects. We lost the ability to come together for Lewisville's betterment. Well, we have a solution for you: Spotlight Media Network. Spotlight Media Network is a place anyone can go, whether it be social media, YouTube, or our website, that will display information in different formats to show the best Lewisville has to offer. One last thing: if you have something newsworthy or something you would like the community of Lewisville to hear about, send us an email at spotlightlewisville1@gmail.com. So if you want to see what is happening in Lewisville or the best Lewisville has to offer, check out Spotlight Media Network, where we know Lewisville is number one.
Now you can see every school, to the smallest school, to the intermediate schools, to the schools in the outlying areas. It gives you coverage that you could just never get to before. It's something that's great to experience, and it's opened up a whole new wave of sports viewership. The possibilities are endless here at YSN. Push the envelope every day. Try something new. If it works, great. If it doesn't, well, let's try another angle. And we just keep moving forward. My name is Mike Ackelson, and my sports network is your sports network.
Hello. Did you know that when you invest in your smile, you're investing back into your Stark County community? Welcome to Thomas Dental. My name's Tanya. I'm Dr. Mike's practice manager. Every day, we're investing back into our community. Here are just a few of our community efforts. Here at Thomas Dental, our mission is to bring smiles back to our community, one smile at a time.
What made me choose Stark State? I heard it was a great place to start. They have the lowest tuition around, and their programs easily transfer to other colleges. After high school, I did some soul searching. I wanted to major in something that would allow me to help people. I was impressed with all the options. Stark State has more than 230 associate degrees and certificates that get you ready for the next stage in life. I've studied in areas like political science and sociology with great professors who have a lot of real-world experience. I'm earning an associate degree that transfers to Ohio State, and I want to make an impact working in international law someday. So when people ask me about my goals, here's what I tell them: "I will be a leader, and I will make a difference." And I've already been smart about getting my start at Stark State College.
Since 1932, Arrowhead Orchard has been your go-to farm for fresh flavor and unforgettable fun. Just outside of Lewisville, in Paris, Ohio, Arrowhead Orchard has 7,000 apple trees, as well as peaches, sunflowers, pumpkins, cider, baked goods, and more. There's something for everyone. Hop on a hayride, pick your own apples, get lost in the maze, zip through our obstacle course, or play around in our new indoor mini-golf facility. There is plenty of fun for everyone. And now, you can host your next graduation, anniversary, birthday party, or special event in our beautiful new event center: Archwood Orchard, where tradition meets fun. Check out our website at arrowheadorchard.com for details, or you can call us at 330-862-2733.
This might have predated the bowling alley. Because it was always the way it was. You'd smash the ball for it.
But I mean, we got that, like, in the bowling alley. Because, like, this building over here, and then there was, like, a vacant space, and you built the bowling alley on, and then that's hilarious.
Oh, I'm sure, on, like, where the restaurant was this? I don't see everything, so it's been past.
Did you, uh, ever go to the movies?
Oh, yeah.
My daughter's coming.
Check the calendar.
Same there, Goldie. She's so excited.
It is the best place I've been.
I know, Brian.
I was writing about that earlier this morning. It's like asking stuff. So it's like, oh, yeah, a little bit, you know? It's, you know, it's a great place.
It's a bunch more snow. Well, just traded.
Yeah.
It's a love's job.
Yeah, it was.
Brian's a good guy.
Yes.
The agenda for this evening, again, it's an introduction to our organization. And I wanted to go into the critical economic development challenges within Stark County. But, and then after that, current initiatives that we are undertaking to address the challenges, some of the results from the past fiscal year, and then, of course, open it up to any questions that anybody might have. So please, any questions along the way, just, just, just put your hand up and we'll take it from there. All right. So, who we are. So traditionally, there was two organizations. There was Stark Economic Development Board since 1985, and Strengthening Stark, which was a community economic development organization, which was, we celebrated our 10-year anniversary this year. And always there was a relationship, and mostly it was the Stark Economic Development Board was the fiscal agent for Strengthening Stark. But when I came on board a year ago, my board said, look, it's, it's really linked, and we want you to merge the organizations together into one. And I was very happy about that when I was going through my interview process, as you see in a moment, because it lends itself to a more holistic economic development model, and you'll see in a moment. So Strengthening Stark, you know, there's three ways to create wealth, investment in a community, in a piece of geography, whether it's a community, a state, even a country. You can attract a company in, and they create jobs and investment. You can expand one of your existing companies, that's called business retention and expansion, and you can foster entrepreneurship, you can help businesses to start up. And that's traditionally, for Stark Economic Development Board, it was investment attraction and BRE, not so much on the fostering entrepreneurship, but we are looking to expand that role as well. Strengthening Stark, again, it was community economic development. You see, the four strategies were the original ones on the side. Drive enrollment to in-demand jobs and careers, expand diversity employment industries, retain and attract talent, big challenge, big challenge, and not just here, everywhere. And to drive and reward innovation and productivity growth. We've added a new one, and we'll talk about that a little bit, is to catalyze and accelerate the development of workforce housing. And, and so that is, and I actually had some, few handouts here. This was published just recently because of our, I don't know if I can send some work today for the 10-year anniversary. So, we also, the third organization that's related with us is the Stark County Port Authority. So, the Port Authority has its own board, but we have a contract Stark Economic Development Board to administer it. So one of my teams is, is the administrator, runs it for the board. And it's a tool, it's, it's, again, I was, during my interview process, I'm looking at the tools, the things we have, and to have a Port Authority was phenomenal, because they can help to finance some of the projects, especially infrastructure, like sewer and roadways and things like that, through tax increment financing and through some other products. So, three together brings us to this Ned Hill model, which is, he's a professor down at Ohio State, he's retired now, but I love his model, because it, it shows how things relate together. So we took his model, the five developments, and we put our logos around it to show each one of our organizations how we contribute. And again, Strengthening Stark, creating the conditions, Port Authority, providing some capital, and then Stark Economic Development Board delivering the outcomes, helping companies to expand, attracting companies in. And why I like this model so much is, I've always had the philosophy in economic development, if you're not working with a client, you need to be working on your product. And what's our product? Our product is our communities, our sites, our workforce, our universities, the infrastructure, it's all part of our, our product. And so, I really am a big fan of this model, and it illustrates how we contribute and how we support economic development. And the next ones, which are a little bit more detail, I'm going to go through them quickly, but from economic development, you heard me talk about business retention and expansion, liaising with Jobs Ohio, which is, of course, Ohio's economic development organization, the state organization, liaising with Team Neo, maybe you've heard of Team Neo, that's the 14-county regional economic development organization. And so, partner resources, looking for, helping companies identify state incentives, B-to-B sessions, and of course, investment attraction. Working the leads that come in from Team Neo, working the leads that contact us ourselves, working with leads that municipalities bring to us for assistance. And we're good partners, we don't get in anybody's way, we don't claim everybody's credit, happy to sign NDAs, and happy to support. There's no, no pride, no ownership, and want to make that clear right away. Never hesitate to give us a call, maybe we don't know the answer, but it's certainly always worth the call. We can make a connection, and, and I'll get to the Dave compliment card of the presentation right now, he's a great guy. I've been here a year, we've worked on a number of things together already. Most recently, you'll see one of our site inventory projects, and, and we call him for information too, he's pretty experienced in Stark County, so appreciate your, the relationship we have with you, Dave, and the support, and Andy as well, coming to the different events, and just keeping the lines of communication open. So, I felt good to go coming here tonight, because again, it's, it's municipality that understands it, and you've got really good people, and looking out for the community and looking for the opportunities, so appreciate that. Doesn't always happen, believe it or not, doesn't always happen. Again, I talked about expanding entrepreneurial pathways. Again, that's, that's something that we are looking to do more of. When I came in, you know, the, the investment attraction and business retention expansion were very strong, very, very strong. But how to help entrepreneurs, there wasn't as much activity. Now, the good news is, there's a lot of organizations that support entrepreneurship. Jumpstart, which is an accelerator, they've got their local office now up at the Hall of Fame Village. We've got the SBDC, and you know, organizations like that. So, what we're looking at is, you know, playing more of a coordinating role, and one of my team, Nishika Combs Lemon, she's actually working on a book project we're calling Pathway to Bankability. So how do we identify companies that, that maybe don't meet the criteria for normal banking yet, but we're working on a loan program to, to provide them financing? It's a pilot project, and to help them increase their credit score and help them build it. So, again, we're not trying to be everything, but where can we contribute and where can we complement? And so I'm really excited how that rolls out, and as we do it, we'll make sure that everybody knows that we're recruiting for some of the companies for the pilot. Workforce development, you're going to see in a moment, it's one of the biggest challenges, you know, and we have to, we have to look as a community, as a county, for every opportunity for workforce. We need to keep our students here that are graduating, we need to be able to attract workforce, and we need to have people who are not in the workforce for, maybe of some sort of barrier, can we, can we get them in a program and get them some training, and upscale them and get them working? And the Strengthening Stark team does a phenomenal job on that, I'll show you a few results here. Housing. Housing was never really a pillar of economic development, it was always an assumed, if a company came in, of course, there's going to be housing for my workers. It is actually now a formal question with many sites who are actually consultants and companies. They want to come in, they want to know if you have the site, they want to know if you have the workforce, they want to know about incentives, but they want to know, they, they know what they pay, right? And they know, you just do the bank math, and they can, they can tell you, you know, what rent they can pay your employees in there. And so, we, before I got here, the, the team worked with the county commissioners to fund a, a study, a year-long housing study, and for the past year, we've been, we've been promoting that and working on identifying solutions to help drive the cost down. At the end of the day, it's math. You make a certain amount of money in your household, you can afford a certain rent, a certain, and then of course, there's the cost of construction and things. So, we're working, we've got Todd Hock, who some of you might know, he's, his, his side gig is Jackson Township Trustee, he was working with our team as a consultant, when the consultant was doing the report, he's now full-time with us, and we're working with, we're actually, we're in Louisville last summer presenting, and I'm happy to come back again to, to update at a different time on that. But housing is a key, and I'm going to show you some stats in a moment, and it's certainly one of the pillars for the Strengthening Stark side of the house right now. And then, community economic development, again, it's the product, right? It's our product. So, working again, the, the jobs, attracting the students, keeping the students, doing the training, working with other organizations that are promoting that, whether it be the Urban League, or Camp For All People, or, or Habitat, or any organization that's, that's contributing and that impacts economic development and the economies of our region. And sites, you know, at the end of the day, maybe the, the country's doing marketing to attract investment, and then the state is doing some marketing in our region, but at the end of the day, it lands local, right? And so, understanding what sites we have, and then what's their status? And when I mean, I say status, I mean, what, are they shovel-ready or not? And what does that mean? Are they zoned properly? Are they clean if they were, if they were contaminated? Are the utilities that run there? Are the roads there? Because, and today, you know, years ago, the site selection process would start with a phone call, and it might take two years. Now, like, by the time they call you, they've already evaluated you online twice, you're already at stage three, where you used to start at stage one, and they, it's risk mitigation. Where can I go that's not going to cause me any problems, and I can be open in this many months, because I have to construct it, and my contract says I got to deliver the next battery or whatever by this date? So, they don't mess around with, well, maybe the city council will rezone it, or maybe, you know, we'll, we'll run a sewer there, or, you know, it's, it's shovel-ready. So, and again, I'm going to come back to this when I talk about one of the major initiatives that we're doing. But certainly, our team, you know, answers the requests for information that come in from companies, from site-such consultants, to provide information on the sites that we have that meet the specs that they request. All right, challenges. By the way, these are not unique to Stark County, these are, these are everybody's challenges to some extent or another, but, but they're certainly, yeah. One of the great things about Stark County is we have some really, really good shovel-ready sites for, you know, for manufacturing, for trade sector. But we also are very positive, and we think we're going to fill those sites with, with companies, and so we want to need a pipeline of more sites coming on. And I mentioned before, one of the things we're doing, we undertook right away, we said, you know what, we need to have, we need to do an analysis, and we need to do an inventory of all developable sites, around 20 acres or above in the county. But not just the sites, then, what stage are they at? What do they need? But for some zoning, but for a roadway? And that's the strategy part of the, so site inventory and strategy part. So, we want to identify them, and then we want to work with, with the municipalities, with the landowners to say, hey, we've got a site that's probably maybe 18 months away from being shovel-ready, you've put for this investment, and let's look for some grants, maybe to, depending on what's going on, or let's talk to it. Because unfortunately, you know, you, you hear, tell me if you've heard this before, well, I'll look at that if I get somebody interested in it. No way, it doesn't work. It's not, you know, it's, if it's not ready, they're not, they're not going to work. And so, the good news is, we, we are working with Team Neo, we are working with the Cuyahoga Land Bank, and the Fund for Economic Future, and we are looking at sites all over Stark County, not just the industrial and manufacturing sites, housing sites as well, that's a difference from some of the projects that other regions have done in the past. That's going on, we just had our, so we're, we're looking at it, we're creating some GIS, we had in, in, a couple in-country meetings, we've had meetings with the 3D spots throughout the state, Dave was a participant in that, to identify sites to put in, and I'm anxious for that to get finished in the next few months, because it's really going to be a pillar of our economic development, it's really going to be a pathway, working on the product, remember? So, we're going to have this list of sites, and then, an identification of exactly what we need to do to them to get them ready, because we always want to have that. And we're actually going to be looking for a, a new, a new employee, a new full-time equivalent, because it's that important that we need, probably have somebody full-time. Hasn't been announced yet, hadn't got approval from my board yet, but I'm confident that it'll look a little later. So that's, that's, that's going on, that's one of our big initiatives, I'm happy to say, there's a really strong initiative that, that Louisville is a part of as we, as we go through this. I've mentioned the shortfall in income-aligned housing. One of the things we learned over the past year is, if you call it affordable housing, people think the worst, and it's homeless shelters and things like that, and it's, it's not, it's income-aligned housing. It's, it's, housing is where, where the jobs go home to sleep at night, is what we say. And so we've, we've got that study done, and then we've got, like I said, a full, full team from the community, five different committees working on it. At the time of the study, median income, household income in Stark County was $63,000, and the median home value was $200,000. And that meant that, that median income, median, only four homes priced at $135,000, there's not too many of those around, as you know. Since then, the, I'm happy to say, the median income has gone up to 69, family income, family household income's gone up to $69,000, but the average sale price of a, of a home is $223,000, and the average list price is $249,000. And on the other side, this was the old income gap, remember the math I was telling you about, right? And come to find out that the median price for new construction in Stark County, so median, the middle, $542,000. So the family household income needed for that is $174,000, which means that, starting from scratch, 89% of Stark County residents are priced out. So, this is not homeless shelters, this is, this is your folks working on hospitals, and your high schools, and your police, and your fire. And, and it's, it's one of the things we've done, and if we come back out, we'll show you the scenarios that we've made and what people can afford. So, the big part of last year was clearing off the misconceptions about what this is and the housing, and then identifying the sites. Now, there's some good news, there's, there's some state incentives, we're working with the county and municipalities on regulation to see what we can cut out there, but it's, 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 it's an uphill battle. But it's one, as I said, it's, we just can't be left to its own, its own accord anymore. We've got to have a, the site, the, the study identified that we need 13,000 doors in the next five years, and by doors, we mean whether it's a house or apartment, in, in that wage level from 35, yeah, 35 to 100,000, 13,000 in Stark County. And somebody asked today, I was at a meeting, have we ever, in Stark County, ever, in its history, like after the war or anything ever had? I, I don't know. But it's, the point is, we have to, to try. Now, all housing is good, people say, what about this type of housing? And that could, hey, every house that gets added to the supply is good, is good. But what we're focusing on is economic development, is related to the economic development, to the, to the workers, okay, income-aligned for the workers. Speaking of workers, workforce quality and quantity, always, always an issue. First factor after sites is cost, quality, and availability of labor. We're very fortunate here, we have the post-secundaries. When I was evaluating the product, you know, once they got through evaluating me, that was one of the things I looked at, and having the post-secundaries was very important to me. Having the Stark Education Partnership with its, with its programs, you know, in the high schools and working with the students to identify capabilities, things, phenomenal. So, and the last time I saw a demographic report, I think Stark County's population went up by like 0.1%, so as long as it's going positive, it's good. If it's going negative, companies notice that, because they're not just going to make an investment here for the next three years, it's, they're looking at 20 years, right? They're investing millions of dollars, so we need to keep that, that, that population going the right way, and we need housing for that population. An interesting stat, got this from Team Neo, on the, on the left, it's, so Stark County's the dark green, and on the left, it's telling us that we have more people closer to retirement age than the country has on average. And that's probably a bad thing, I call it the gray tsunami, right? That's going through our, our workforce. But the right side is, how many millennials, age 25 to 39, do we have compared to the average in the country, and we have fewer? And that's a reason that on Strengthening Stark, one of the, the, the goals is to, is to, you know, get younger, you know, crack that, that workforce. So, it's, it's real, it's there. And it's, it's always say, it's okay to have challenges as long as you're addressing them, right? Okay, I'm not going to go through everything here, but it's, it's in the presentation, Dave, this is not confidential at all, you can send it around here. But basically, you know, we measure for Strengthening Stark, you know, how much do we, people do we get placed, and they get through a program, like Career Connect, and then do we get them into a job, and are they able to, to, we measure after 90 days that they still have that job, which is great, the workforce, housing, what we're doing, grant coordination, we have a grant, a grant writer, an administrator who's working for grants for us, but also helping. So if you guys are working on a grant, give us a call, because we're either a support letter, or Mitch, he's just a terrific, great young man, and maybe he can provide some assistance or even identify some, some possibilities. It was very important, we updating our website, I think everybody in the whole team has got theirs cart done but me, but, I'm busy making presentations. But no, we're, we're updating the website. I mentioned before, a lot of times for site selection, for people researching Stark County, they start on the web and you don't even know they're looking at you, by the time you get a contact, it's stage three of the old, you know, five-stage program. So we're looking to make it a tool that works for us, so updating the data, updating the sites, having the access, having information, having newer contacts on there, so that is going well. We're working with Innes Majority, a member of you probably know them, they've been phenomenal, helping us and keeping us going along. One of the other things that we have actually completed is we were, we were, I was on the steering committee for a Northeast Ohio group with Greater Cleveland Partnership, Greater Akron Chamber, Team Neo, Magnet, and ourselves. We had a consultant from McKinsey, working on identifying, you know, what industry should Stark County be looking at, what makes the most sense, you know, what's the, the, the right, right to earn, and then the wish, you know, the wish, and what should we be doing? Because you always have to be looking forward, because the rate of technology disruption, you know, you always need to be going, going forward and looking, what's the next thing? And the group started with 90, nine zero, industries, and then work the meetings and getting the data, and to narrow it down to five that made the most sense for the total of Northeast Ohio. Now, some of them I think are good for us, and some of them are more, more related to other parts of the, of Northeast Ohio. But we have all the data for 90 industries, so we don't need to go just because it's the final five. The final four were advanced aerospace components, okay, NASA Glen kind of driving that, bio-based polymer, Akron, energy management, that's an opportunity for us for sure, and smart manufacturing tech, which definitely, as our companies adopt smart manufacturing industry 4.0, that's an opportunity. Other ones so far that, that seem to really make sense, agri-food, you know, we have a unique combination of, of rural and assets and urban, logistics and distribution, the last couple of big projects we had were, you know, Amazon and Tracker Supply, so there's certainly, you know, a, a strong case for that. Healthcare and data centers, and if you'd like, I can come back and give you five hours on data centers some other night, but it's, we certainly, love them or hate them, we are attracted to them, so as we go forward. This is the process that, that we went through to get down to that, so it was a very, so for me coming in, it was phenomenal, we have an industry study to double-check that, we have a housing study to work on, we have the site inventory analysis, so it's, like I tell my board, the strategic plan's kind of right in itself, right, as we get all this data in, so I'm really, really happy how that's going. And I mentioned strategic planning, we've got that underway, which, again, looking at a three-to-five-year timeframe, you know, what makes sense? What, what do we need to work on? What parts of our product do we need to improve? Who do we make sense for, and where should we commit our never enough resources for, for doing this type of work? So, and I think, oh, results, last year, we had nine projects successfully closed, that was down from 17 the year before. The middle part of last year was, things just froze with, with economic uncertainty, tariffs, and the uncertainty, a lot of deals just froze. So we started off, we had four in the first quarter, then we didn't have any till the last quarter, when things, people, companies started having more confidence that things had settled down. So we had less than last year, but we certainly have a strong pipeline of leads starting this year. BRE, we do over, and it's primarily one of our team, Helene Papsum, 200 visits a year to companies, trade sector, you know, manufacturing most. And, and certainly, in Louisville, we had four last year. No expansions, but certainly good, good tours and understanding, and, you know, we're always watching the opportunities, so we will, if there's a company you think we should talk to, give us a call, we'll come out and talk, and, you know, if they're considering an expansion, maybe, you're hiring people, or they need a training program, maybe we can hook them up with one. But it's certainly worth the call, and it's worth the time to see, maybe, maybe it comes to nothing, you know? Jobs Ohio has specific requirements and recommendations for projects in job creation and investment, but we have a good relationship with them, and so, you know, we'll promote the project to the best of our ability. Yeah, again, we met our BRE targets, we did not meet our, we were a little spoiled the year before, we had 17 projects, so we were a little aggressive when we set our goals, we did not meet the goals that we set, but again, you know, it's, it's understanding the reason, and that seems to be settled down, so we said we're off to a good start this year. And that's it, so that's an awful lot, I threw at you, I know that, happy to come back and talk housing, and whether it's council or committee, or, you know, whatever works that way, and happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, that's, that is a lot of information, Steve, we really appreciate you being here, and you did answer a few of my questions along the way before I even had a chance to ask them, but just, do you have any interaction or relationships with industrial sites, like, like owners of the, of the ground? But just, do you have any interaction or relationships with industrial sites, like, like owners of the, of the ground? And, and how does that, how does that play out?
Some, some, yeah, it just depends on, on who the owner. Some of them we, we know well, some are located in a different country and seem to be impossible to, to get information from. So it's really a mixed bag.
So can it be challenging at times? Because I mean, obviously, if these, these grounds are listed, if they might be out of the price range maybe for a potential client.
So that's, 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 you know, I'd love if one municipality has a piece of property, because then they can, they can, you know, work, work a deal, they have more flexibility. Privately owned, it's some philanthropic folks out there, but mostly it's, it's market rate, it makes it a little tougher. And, you know, we, we have a pretty good brokerage community here, the ones that I've met are, are sharp, you know, the one, you know, the real estate companies. There's, there's a lot of information out there, but it's, it's a challenge. As I said, it's, I can pitch a site with all of its great characteristics, but I don't control the, you know, it's up to the market to sort of correct if it's over.
For the record, Dave and I had already discussed this, but I did want that to be out to the public a little bit. I'm sure that can be a, a challenge.
If you could wave a magic wand and have, you know, council do something that would help, is there anything that we could do right now that we haven't already done? You know, to give us a better chance of economic development opportunities coming our way?
Yeah, I'm happy to say, Mayor, that Louisville is, is doing it. Great support on our site inventory. If there's, if there's inquiries, like requests for information, we've done a number of joint, you know, joint meetings with the client. And I would say, you know, that encouraging shuttle-ready, I don't know, I just don't recall if Louisville has tracks of property under its control. But back to, to Gee's point, you know, working with clients to say, hey, you know, is, is it shuttle-ready, what's the status, encouraging it. And I guess I should say, working on the product, right? Like I said, when we're not working with a client, work on the product. And, you know, are there agreements that can be made with, with neighboring municipalities? Are there sites that you know of that can be assembled? You know, that maybe two of them together aren't there? So, but as I said, I'm, this is, I was, some places I go, I don't know, how is this gonna go? Like, I really wasn't worried about that here. Everything is, is going well here and engaged, and, yeah, so it's, but, yeah, anything that works on the product. Regulation is part of the product, right? So is there, is there, you know, zoning, is there, is there something that can be improved there by, by learning from talking to developers and people that have come in? You know, marketing, you know, being ready, being, as I said, you're already there, but, you know, very responsive to, to inquiries, you know, for information on the site or information or getting a meeting. Like, as I said, I'm, I'm happy to say, we enjoy working with Louisville.
Okay, great. Yep. You touched on communities, surrounding communities, et cetera. I mean, I know, and there's been a lot of publicity lately about annexation and stuff. I would just curious on your, your take on JEDs and kind of what's been pouring out in the newspaper.
Yeah, well, one of the, so a couple of things on that. One of the things I, I impress upon local administrators and local administrations is, you do not exist in a bubble. So if, let's just say, one municipality is looking to an ex, or another one, and they don't like that, and it gets in the paper back and forth, like even maybe as recent as today? Like I mentioned before, when clients are looking at us and companies are looking at us, and consultants are looking at us, they do the site search first, okay, Stark County Ohio, what's going on? And they see this, like, okay, remember I talked about risk mitigation? Forget that. So I am always not happy when the message we're sending out to the world, and it is the world, it really is, is that we're dysfunctional and arguing. So now, don't say what I'm saying, I don't want any reports back to people that are elected to say, the new guy said you were like, I don't want, I don't want that. Hypothetically. So to that end, Dave, you know, it just makes common sense that if you can come to an agreement with likes like a joint economic development district, a cooperative agreement is always going to be better than what might be a hostile, it is a hostile takeover from annexation. It's, you know, I've lived and worked in three countries now, and like this whole annexation thing is like, what the hell is that? Like, it's just, I don't under, I, like, in America? In the United States, you know, you just go in and grab? Like, I, I, it scares me a little bit because, again, the current situation, let's just be honest, is sending out a really bad message to the rest of the country and the world, and people looking at us for investment. So anytime there's cooperation, and I mentioned before, one of my colleagues is trustee, township trustee with Jackson Township. And he mentioned, the other day we were talking about it, and, you know, Jackson Township brings in a million dollars a year in revenue because it's shared, joint economic development, so surrounding municipalities instead of annexation. And the share allows the township in this case to, to, to earn a percentage of the income tax. And they don't need to provide services. So like I said, if a city wants to annex a, a part of a township, they usually have to assume the costs for the services. And I think I'm right here. But a jet, you don't have to do any of that, you just share in the revenue. So again, talk in general, right? Every situation is different, and it has to be looked at it. But certainly, I would encourage, anytime there's the opportunity for, for collaboration and win-win versus potentially the opposite, I would, I would encourage that. All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity. And as I mentioned, you know, call anytime, that's why we're here. You're here, we're here in development for the county, so we've got a great relationship with Dave. But if there's any topics that come up in the future you want us to, to, to come and present on, whether it's to committee or, or to council, I'm more than happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. All right, and next up is Mr. Greg Anderson. Greg, you can come share an update from the Parks Committee.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, council members, and the rest of the clan. So I'm, tonight you have the first reading of a proposed park descheduled update. And just a little bit of, I think, background and philosophy as the park commission or the park advisory committee came together. So we look at the fees, it really is city versus non-city, and I shouldn't say versus, but, you know, the taxpayers are the folks who are paying for the parks, so we're gonna not have as high a fee on taxpayers than we would on my followers. Priority is to start with our city leagues, which also include the, you know, collaboration with YMCA. The updates come because we've also had some updates in theater. So with the new baseball fields, new concession stand coming, you know, onboard this year, we need to make sure that our fees include those as well. And then, you know, as we went through this whole process of looking at some of these updates, it was really interesting because the baseball club, softball club, and YMCA were with us as we walked through this discussion. And actually, the dollar amounts came from them, from a suggestion standpoint, because we basically just asked a lot of questions around, what do you think is fair? What do you think the top, you know, areas could be? And these are actually some of the numbers that they came back to us with. So it wasn't just something that we just, you know, licked our finger and said, I think this number sounds good. That it was actually collaboration with those groups. And having said that, the one group we haven't had time to, to spend time with or discuss around is the soccer club. So soccer club never wants an increase, and they probably won't appreciate this either. I haven't had a chance to talk with Shondo or Giomati since this proposal came out. He's actually coming to the meeting tomorrow night that we'll have. But, you know, basically, we saw a couple of recommendations that are, you know, with the increases. One is with the per field or for the leagues is $250 per field for the entire season. And what we wanted to do is do it per season as opposed to all the fields, which we had originally had set up that way. So the idea is, is as people register for their needs, they'll come in and register for a field for the season. And then for groups like baseball, softball, soccer, they have multiple field needs, and they can select up to as many fields as they want with a cap of $1,500. So they can go over, you know, the, the five, six fields and not have to pay above that. Now, on the, the non-city leagues, it's $500 per season. So, you know, one of the things that, and credit to the council is that we've seen a huge improvement in parks, particularly over the last four to five years. There's been a much noticed, more noticeable investment in the parks, and the parks are certainly a key part of the community. And not that the city ever wants to charge fees, but we also need to maintain these fields, and that has always been a challenge. So as we think about the fees, not that this will give Daryl all the money he needs to get everything he ever wants, but it will help to soften the impact, make sure that we are dragging fields with the baseball fields, for example. And that's one, one area that, you know, Daryl's committed to doing is dragging fields, which we really haven't done before. So, so there's some additional things that we'll do that, you know, having an increase in field fees are, I think, reasonable, but we're also trying to be mindful that, you know, these are also, you know, community members creating these facilities as well. So the other, the other increase was to add the new concession stand. And then the tournaments, we added a deposit, and it's a refundable deposit. So particularly with things like the concession stand now, or some of the, you know, the, the field areas we have, making sure that people actually take care of the facilities. So the, I, there's two things associated with it. One is to protect for damage. If people know that they've got a deposit, they're gonna clean things up when they're done, and then they get the return of it, deposit. The other is, is it helps the city plan. So if somebody doesn't have a deposit and they schedule a tournament and they don't show up, and we take those facilities offline for people to plan for those as well. So what the deposit does is ensure that we've got mindful folks wanting to get their deposit back, and also to ensure that we've got at least a couple of weeks to plan if somebody plans a tournament or facility usage. And if they don't use it, they've got two weeks before the event to cancel if they don't do that and they lose more of the deposit. Questions? Anything you'd add, Daryl?
Hey, Greg.
Guy.
Do you guys look at any other municipalities or any other areas, just to see?
When we first started looking at a fee plan, we absolutely did. We looked at some of the Canton fields, like the soccer fields over in Canton are almost double what we charge. I think we're actually, came out as the cheapest municipality for our charges. I can't remember where, where Minerva was or if they're charging down there, but I know we looked at Canton facilities for sure, and we're definitely below, and, yeah.
And the way I read this, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that some of this fee could potentially go for a concession stand where they, that organization would be able to recoup some of that money then.
Yeah, actually, the, what they're doing is running the concession stand, and they can sell whatever, I guess they're allowed by the city to sell, out of the concession stand. So they're renting the use of the facility, and they can, particularly for the baseball clubs, a number of the clubs see it as a big opportunity, particularly during tournament time.
Yeah, especially with a tournament, I would imagine for a, you know, a $125 more charge or a $500 more charge. I mean, that could make that up at a weekend tournament.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So just the admission fees for a tournament, you know, they're actually, for like the soccer club, that's their largest fundraiser of the year, is their, one of their three-day weekend events, and they've raised quite a bit of money for that event.
So just to clarify, all four of the groups that use the parks regularly were invited for their input? And three of the four were, gave input and were okay with the pricing?
I'm not sure about the invitations.
Okay.
They showed up.
Sure, okay.
So we talked with three out of the, three out of the four major meat groups. Soccer team was, the soccer group, while we, I know that they reached out to, Shondo reached out to Andy. And I think the soccer group is not happy with the increase. The other groups were actually, they're the ones who recommended these numbers. Anything else, Andy?
I think I would, I would just add to, to Greg's point that we did, in the 2026 budget, added additional funds for exactly the purpose that he's talking about, the maintenance of those fields and to, and to be able to more efficiently take care of the park.
And that, and that's on top of the hundreds of thousands of dollars we've, we've put into it
Correct.
over the last four to five years.
Strictly maintenance.
And what's a big complaint we used to get is, you know, we didn't have things maintained. You know, and so this, this is in essence, is helping us maintain and protect the investment that we've, we've made.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. Pickleball courts.
Oh, pickleball courts. So one last thing on pickleball courts, talking about what can you recommend?
Yes.
Okay, so with the pickleball courts for all of our pickleballers here, the current courts, while they're definitely useful and they get a fair amount of use, they're actually not tournament-ready or qualified. So the advisory board recommended a couple of things. One is where the existing courts are today, to actually expand out two more courts to the east where that open area is. And to take the current courts that exist today and actually resize them for tournament use, and actually put down an appropriate pickleball surface. So right now, the surface isn't like a pickleball tournament approved, but to go in and reset where the posts are, extend the current fields, make sure we've got the right fencing in between so that they are tournament-ready, because there are tournaments that we've already run out of that, but they're not officially tournament-ready. So that was a recommendation for the expansion of adding the two additional courts to add more capacity, because on busy nights, you've got a lot of people rotating in and out. And then to make sure that we can host tournaments.
Mention pickleball tournaments, huh?
Yes.
Going big time.
And we found that out early on, just when people, they were too compact, they were too close. So, yeah, this is a good opportunity to...
And we've also got some drainage problems today too, so, you know, while they've been very usable, we do have some cooling in a couple of spots, so being able to fix that at the same time would be helpful.
Great.
So at, at council's direction, Mayor, what we'll do is seek a rough estimate of what that would cost, determine if there's enough money left in the Mesker Trust Fund, and then determine if it's something that would need to, based on the cost, go out to bid, or if we could just move forward with the project.
Okay. All right.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Greg. All right, let's move on to ordinance number 26-09.
Being an ordinance of the Council of the City of Louisville, Stark County, Ohio, amending and revising associated ordinances as herein addressed in Chapter 157 of the Codified Ordnances. of the codified ordinances of the City of Louisville relative to the employment provisions of the employees of the city, not otherwise covered by or in conflict with provisions found in the most current collective bargaining agreement with the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association, the Firefighters Labor Union, absentee, Local Number G five fifty-five, Louisville Utility Workers Union of America, AFL-CIO, or employment contracts.
To make the motion, we redraft ordinance number twenty-six oh nine.
Second.
Mayor, this is the change to the table of organization that adds the two laborer positions that will be filled in, will fill in operator positions in the public works department. Great.
Okay, go ahead and vote.
Gudon?
Yes.
Michaela Star Atkins, yes. Street?
Yes.
Al Jantzer?
Yes.
All right, let's move to ordinance number twenty-six dash ten.
Being an ordinance amending the schedule of fees to be effective March third, twenty twenty-six for the City of Louisville.
Make the motion, we bring ordinance number twenty-six ten to the table for its first reading.
Second.
Mayor, I don't think I could do a better job of explaining what Greg already did, so we'll leave it at that.
Yeah, any, any further discussion on that?
No, not for me.
No, it's.
Okay, and I will note, this is not being passed by emergency. So we'll have a chance, it'll be, I assume, discussed at the Parks Committee meeting. And then we will have a chance to discuss it again at our next council meeting.
Correct, I've, I've communicated with Shondor and at this point, him and his board would probably come to the second reading for the Parks speaks portion to, to communicate with you about it.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Let's go ahead and vote.
Gudon?
Yes.
Michaela Star Atkins, yes. Street?
Yes.
Al Jantzer?
Yes.
All right, next up is ordinance number twenty-six dash eleven.
Being an ordinance of the Council of the City of Louisville, Star County, Ohio, amending and revising associated ordinances as herein addressed in chapter one oh seven of the codified ordinances of the City of Louisville relative to notice of public meetings.
I'd make the motion that we bring ordinance number twenty-six eleven to the table for its first reading.
Second.
So Mayor, this amounts to changes in the ordinance following the, kind of some of the clarifications that were made in the charter that was voted on in November to primarily allow us to issue notices for city council meetings and city boards and commissions via the, the internet and posting at city hall. And it also updates some of the language, takes out processes like oral notifications, telegraph notifications, mail notifications, things like that. So it just updates the ordinance to reflect how we would like to do things with respect to.
To be clear, we're not informing via telegraph.
We, we, we're going to stop doing that.
It orally, like, we used to be like, you could just go tell people, hello, we have a meeting.
I think carrier pigeon was in there.
Well, I, I'd like to thank you and staff for getting our meetings online, for posting the agendas in advance. I think that's, that's all helpful and it goes to show, we've never had anything to hide. We don't have anything to hide. Everyone is welcome. But if they're unable to make it, you know, there's other opportunities for them to see what their local government is doing with their tax dollars. So thank you for that. Let's go ahead and vote.
Gudon?
Yes.
Michaela Star Atkins, yes. Street?
Yes.
Al Jantzer?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to new business. One item that is under new business, I received an email from council member Mills this afternoon that was sent to city manager Terowski and myself. And she has family obligations that she needs to put first and she submitted her letter of resignation. So I know I speak on behalf of council. We will miss her and her insight and her expertise being here. And so I will entertain a motion to officially accept her resignation letter.
Corey, I'd make the motion to accept council member Mills' letter of resignation, Lewisville City Council.
Second.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead and vote.
Gudon?
Yes.
Michaela Star Atkins, yes. Street?
Yes.
Al Jantzer?
Yes.
Um, and correct me if I'm wrong, but per the charter, I believe city council now has thirty days to fill that seat. And so I would look for some type of advertising to go out in the next, next couple of days with further direction after we have a chance to discuss it. So let's move on to a discussion of a community entertainment district.
Mayor, council, we've discussed this in the past with the old council. I know we have a couple of new members. I had an opportunity to talk to them in depth about this community entertainment district. What we're doing right now is just kind of presenting it to council. As part of the process, you'll be, we're required to have two public hearings to anticipate to have the next, first public hearing at the next council meeting. And then the council meeting after that would be our second public hearing. At that point, we'll have a resolution brought for council to approve, if that's the case, to approve it. And then basically, all I have to do at that point is submit the paperwork to Columbus for authorization. And then at that point, there will be eight licenses, D five J licenses for the district itself. We have no involvement in who gets those licenses. That's all done through the Department of Public Control.
Okay.
Okay.
Questions for Dave?
Dave, I just want to thank you for your work on this. I, I, I think it's really, I mean, I know it's been all of you and there we, we talked. And I, this isn't a silver bullet, but it is a tool in the toolbox. I've already heard somebody might be interested in one of the, one of the, one of the licenses. So we're hopeful that it does first and stuff in the district.
Good.
Yeah. Yeah. You stole my line, stole my line. There's, there's no, there's no magic bullets with, with economic development. But anything that we can do that could possibly help, you know, I think we, we have to take action.
Definitely, yeah.
Take action to, to try.
Yeah, with that said, Corey, not only is it not a silver bullet that's going to solve all our problems, but is there a downside? I, I just, I mean, I don't, I don't think there's a downside to it, right? I, I don't see it, to be quite honest with you. I mean, you can always have issues with regards to liquor permits, but that's just the general case.
Yeah, historically, whether it's the addition of a liquor license, what initially started out as the chambers, events downtown or now Second Fridays, we have had very, very limited issues because of it, because of the alcohol downtown, fortunately.
Yeah, it, it was funny, another, I knew Philadelphia was considering, you know, the open container and, you know, different things. And somebody had reached out and they said, like, tell me about all the problems that you've had. And I was like, ah, you know, in eight plus years that I've been, you know, a part of the organization, I am, I mean, not aware of more than a few, a few, and they're extremely limited. So, and anytime that comes from a police chief or a former police chief, I'll, I'll take your word for it.
We've been very fortunate.
Okay, so you said you don't need any action from us now, you'll bring it next meeting?
It'll be, it'll be the second meeting that we'll actually have.
Great, sounds good. Let's move on to city manager report.
All right, Mayor, just a few things in no particular order. Just a reminder, the chamber dinner is Thursday night, of course, at the KMG building. I, I emailed you a link if you have interest in going to the Visit Canton's convention and visitors bureau update on February twenty-sixth. As you know, Louisville will be kind of featured in some degree at that event. Regarding Mr. Phillips' presentation at the last meeting, we did communicate with Kimball. It is a five-year contract. They don't have an interest in, in changing anything relative to the contract. But just a couple of other points to make. The, the contract, when it was first bid in, in twenty twenty-two and even now, would be about ten percent higher. And we would, if, if we as a city did that billing and we would retain that ten percent to cover our administrative expenses for doing that. That's why them doing the billing, the organization that is obviously already set up for it, can do it at a lesser cost than we can. The other point I wanted to make, with respect to residents paying a separate trash bill from their utility bill, that's exactly how it was prior to us doing the single holler. The only thing that really changed for residents is they got a substantially lower trash bill and they had additional service. Certainly understand that there were a number of residents that weren't happy that, that they couldn't choose their, their trash provider. But in the end, with respect to the billing, it, it hasn't, for the individual resident, it hasn't changed. They still pay a separate trash bill from their utility bill.
Can you, can you refresh my memory on that? I know we had talked about, you know, different seasonal options that residents have. Or if, let's just say, somebody bought a house, they were gutting it, nobody was living there. Are there different options in the contract that could address those you need kind of circumstances?
They, they do, they do have the option of essentially pausing of, of the service, correct, yeah. Admittedly, that is the responsibility of the property owner.
Sure.
But they do have, they do have the ability to do that.
Just saying, if somebody was not in a rent house or they were doing a gut, they, they do have opportunities to pause that working through Kimball.
Yes, and we still, on that same topic, we've not come close to the ten percent opt-out for people who would, for whatever reason, choose to not have service at all.
I'd be curious where, where we're at, what, what percentage, just.
We can find out.
It's not important. Nine five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, because that's, that's where we anticipated.
Correct, we're, we're well below, well below.
That, that'd be the same situation when people go to Florida for a few months, hard new service.
Sure. Sure.
I, I shouldn't say Florida, I'm sure people go other places.
Yeah, fair assumption. There's one place to be.
There's one place to be.
All right.
A couple of other quick things. I, I emailed you that we did receive notice from AEP. So if you get concerns about tree work being done in the Mesker Park area or along the trail, that is, that is AEP clearing the, the tramper, the branches rather, from their lines. We are still waiting on the city hall estimate from the estimator, the construction estimator. When we get that, I will certainly share it with you. And then finally, I, I communicated with Michelle Schaefer. She, she believes that the art department at, at the school would have an interest in designing the wraps that would go on the utility boxes. But at last count, we really hadn't come up with what we might want the theme to be or what the parameters of the art would be. So we don't need that right now, but just something to think about. And maybe I will bring it up at the next meeting to see if, you know, there's some, some concept or some ideas that you have for that. I, I'd probably want to avoid just saying, draw something for us. It'd be nice to be able to give them some kind of parameters or, or theme that we would like on those utility boxes. And then we, you know, we originally started talking about this when we originally started. It was primarily the Omni Fiber Boxes, but we really don't have to be limited to just those. We have a number of other types of utility boxes that could be decorated, much like they are in some other communities.
Great.
And that is all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Andy? Okay, let's move on to department head reports. Chief Porter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I have nothing new to report this evening unless someone has some questions.
No news is good news. All right, Mr. Maile?
I, I did want to kind of piggyback on Andy. We had talked about the Stonebridge trees.
Yes.
Okay, did you want to?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we can both, I mean.
Trees.
Yeah.
Didn't know what that meant until now. We brought to your attention at the last meeting that there were considerable upheaving issues with the trees that line the streets in the Stonebridge lot. So what we talked about at the time was that we were going to remove the trees that needed to be removed and then, of course, cause the sidewalks to be, be replaced. That was presented to the tree board, they agreed with it. But one component that we added to try and maybe ease the shock of, of doing this was that we would give the resident the option, if they wanted to have a tree replaced, that we would replace it, but it would be with a tree that was appropriate for that space. Again, giving them an option because inevitably, if you drive down the road, it's, it's very attractive to see that and that's going to be removed. So this will always give them an option to have something replaced if they choose to. So the, we're going to do it in phases, so it's not all done at once. But the first phase would essentially be Reno to the end of the development. We would remove the trees in the not-so-distant future, work on the sidewalk portion of the project. And then likely in the fall, for the residents that wanted the tree replaced, we would then replace it with what we determined would be a tree that would work in that, in that small curb lawn.
And to piggyback on Andy, we're looking to do a phase, most likely depending on cost, but we'd be in Reno. Some numbers, right now, we've got, there's a hundred and sixty-four trees back there. Probably ten of them are ornamentals. We had an arborist, went, met with an arborist, went to recommend and basically taken most of them down, probably except for about ten of them. And Jim has already went through and looked at the sidewalk and tried to coordinate both. We're looking at about thirty blocks of sidewalk on Reno that probably need to be placed, which is about a seven thousand dollar bill based on some, on basic estimates. So we're not quite sure what the tree cost is going to be. Service department is going to help us take down some of the smaller ones, which would be helpful. But it's going to be, you know, costly to take a lot of these trees down, putting additional resources into planting trees, stump grinding. There's a lot of pieces to this. Want to make sure council is aware of this because we want to move forward. We want to notify the homeowners in that area about this, which I'm sure you might get a call or two, so.
When's the timeframe on notification? Very shortly here, maybe the next, next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think we're going to try to put something together, yeah.
We, we ideally want to obviously get to the trees before they start to leaf, to make it easier.
What do you think an approximate budget would be for that?
Well, I, I mean.
Just for the Reno phase?
Trees, it really depends on how we package it. We're not, I'm not quite sure, Reno itself, okay, with Reno, we're looking at fifty-two trees, just on Reno. And most, all those are going to have to come out. If you average five hundred bucks a tree, you know, you can figure that out. Then we're not sure though, as far as what the cost. I was going to talk to the arborist to give me three recommendations on what types of trees to plant. You can try to get an idea of what those costs of those trees are, basically kind of the size of the tree, planning and all that. That's, that's the whole, I mean, we probably package it all together with regards to buying the tree, planting the tree. So there's a lot of different variables we're trying, still trying to work out.
Some of it, we, we likely won't come back. We, we don't think we'll need to come back for additional funding. We believe that money that's available in the sidewalk program and then tree board money should cover most. Can't guarantee it, but it looks like, we did have some cursory research on ornamental trees. We, we think that we should, especially if we do it in phases, we should be able to do it within the existing budget.
And is this something that's being run through the tree board?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great.
That's good. No new money, no new money?
Through the tree board? Check, check.
At least on the financial aspect.
I, I really, I really do like giving residents the opportunity to replace, you know, because a lot, a lot of them weren't the original homeowners. You know, they bought it, it looked like it a certain way. And I, and I get legally that the city could come in and just chop and go and say, fix your sidewalk.
It's a little rough.
Not great PR.
Right, no.
Not great service. And if we have it in our budget, we can do it that way, you know. Kudos to you guys for doing it.
Well, long-term, we're actually saving the homeowner money.
Sure, sure. Okay.
What do we look at, maximum size there for what should we plant in the curb strip?
In terms of the new trees?
Yeah. I don't, I don't know what that's.
The ones that we did research, they're, they're certainly not as big as what's there.
Are you talking about the new, the new ones going? So the tree board has a list of acceptable trees that'll go in the tree lawn. And I think the ornament. And I think the ornamentals that Dave's talking about fit those parameters.
Okay.
Uh, I can probably get you that information if you want to see it and look through them. It just lists the different types of trees that they approved, that the tree board approved to go in tree lawns.
Was it like on Chapel Street when they took the trees out on Chapel? And they replaced some of them because the, the original ones were like uprooting the sidewalks and stuff like that. And then their tree board had certain ones that.
Correct. Which, I actually just talked to Polly earlier today and she said, she mentioned Chauvinton is the street that had a lot of those ornamental trees on it.
That's, that's the one, yeah.
She was gonna run back down through there and just take a look at them again. Because they, she, they did that in one of those streets back there, I guess, the tree board did.
I don't know who planted those trees, but.
That was.
This is probably back, probably a good twenty-five years.
Two thousand.
Like going to Main Street, Main Street and Chapel, they just planted them, not realizing.
Correct.
East Main.
Did roots, how the roots would grow.
Yeah. Okay. All right, Daryl?
Thank you. I really didn't have much. I, I mean, it quit snowing, so it's a good thing. But I just wanted, I just wanted to point out that with the temperatures going up now, that we have a pretty big amount of water leaks that happen throughout the city now. So if you see our crews out there, that's most likely what we're doing. And the only other thing I was gonna point out was the F six hundred truck that council approved us to purchase. We've already, we've got that truck already and it's over at Hopple fabrication. Excuse me, getting upfitted, so that truck here pretty soon.
Great, thank you. All right.
Appreciate you going out. I'm sorry.
No.
Going out removing some of those piles of snow.
Yeah, absolutely.
It does prevent some flooding too, I'm sure, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's our, the worry was, was, and we kind of got a little bit of it, but it wasn't a huge issue. But the worry was, we had so much snow and then it warmed up really quickly and then had nowhere for that water to go. But we really haven't seen a whole lot of issues with it.
Okay, because I, I just, I did hear some comments about, well, it's gonna be melted next week anyway.
I know, yeah.
And I think a lot of people don't understand the flooding issues of that, yeah.
Whatever's gotta go, yeah. All right.
Thanks.
Chief Karasal?
Um, I don't have anything for the police department, but I would advocate for the school's art department. If you remember, they did all my safety city org work. Um, and they did, they did a great job, like they drew the town of Louisville on all the boards for safety cities. So when the little kids come, they recognize all the places. So they do a nice job.
Awesome.
Yeah.
And I know, I love seeing when they do the, at Virgil's, like the coffee mug.
Oh, yeah.
Boy, like that's such a cool, cool project.
Mm-hmm. Thanks for personal touch.
All right. Matt, anything else? Any ways to save us money?
Uh, not right off the top of my head, unfortunately, thank you. But I, no, I have nothing further beyond the, the monthly finance report. Unless there are any further questions, I'm happy to do them.
We'll come back to you next meeting. Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing confidential economic development information and to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public official.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote.
Gadom?
Yes.
Michaela Sturrockin? Yes. Street?
Yes.
Al Jantzer?
Yes.
Okay, uh, don't expect any action after. Thank you very much for coming.